Evening and welcome to the July 22, 2014 School Committee Meeting. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Station Channels 5, 19, and 20 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a minute to introduce our new student member, Brian Atwater. He was recently elected this new Student Council President for the 2014-2015 school year, and we're very glad to have you as our student representative.
Very glad to be here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start off. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I do. The next school committee meetings are August 19, September 9, and 23, 2014. The first day of school for students is Tuesday, September 2, 2014.
Okay, and Laura Scott isn't with us tonight, but we'll turn to Wendy Blumenthal for any correspondence or gifts?
I have no record of correspondence or gifts for tonight.
Okay. So we'll move right along to the public speak portion of our meeting. Before doing so, I would like to share an announcement with everyone. We ask that public speak time, that people limit their comments to two to three minutes, and that you state who you are and where you live. And we'd also like to notify everyone that according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, the process that must be followed for a committee to hear a complaint or charge brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, that the committee must provide at least 48 hours' notice to the individual about whom the complaint is being made. Therefore, if anyone wishes to make such a complaint, the complaint must be provided to the committee sufficiently in advance of a meeting so that the provisions of the statute can be followed. The committee will not hear complaints or charges unless the provisions of the statute have been followed. So with that said, we'd like to move on and invite anyone who would like to come up to the podium and speak to the committee. It's welcome to do so.
I live on Lala Drive in town. I'm here. I don't, I've never done this, so bear with me. And what you just read, I don't know if that applies to me. I'm not here to make a complaint of a specific person, a reelected official. I'm here to request some help. I'm trying, my son had an issue at Whitebrook the day before school ended this year, and we were notified. I don't know if I'm supposed to go into details of what happened, but the basic thing is we disagreed, and we've been fighting for four weeks now trying to get a hold of people, and we want to sit down with a group of people and discuss this, and we're not being allowed to do that. So I don't know if that's all the information you need, or if I need to put everything in writing, because we were just informed our next step was to come here to a meeting. And I mean, I researched everything. I didn't see anything that said I had to put certain things in writing. I can do that, but I just didn't want to miss this meeting since this has been ongoing for four weeks. So I'm looking for guidance on how to handle this matter.
Okay, well, I would suggest, since public speak time normally isn't a time for the committee to respond to any issues, and we're not under the open meeting law allowed to do that because things need to be on the agenda, that what would be best is if you put the information in writing and submitted it to the committee, and then we can respond to you that way.
Okay. So just, and when I do this, you want me to put out everything that has happened and what I'm looking for, and then submit it to you, and then somebody gets back to us?
That would be, yep, that would be the-
Okay, and who do I submit that to?
Process. You could address it to me as chairperson, Deborah Luznia.
Okay. I will do that then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Do we have a finance subcommittee report?
Yes, we have a meeting date, which I'd have to look at what it is.
In August?
In August. I think it's the week before our next school committee meeting. I could rotate up if you want.
That's okay. That's sufficient, okay. Policy Subcommittee.
So we have some second readings of several policies that I want to go through. We had discussed them at the last meeting, so if you have any further questions after reading them the first time, please let me know. But to begin with, I would like to make a motion to move the second reading of the GBLR Background Checks Policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstained? All set. Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the ACE Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Handicap Policy.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the AC Non-Discrimination Policy.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the JBA Student-to-Student Harassment Policy.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And our last one is I make a motion to approve the second reading of the JICFB Bullying Policy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes that follow all these policies are from our last meeting, which we were discussing the bullying policy, and those have been submitted for your review.
Thank you very much. Okay, Wendy, do we have a CES update?
I wish we did. The reality is they scheduled a meeting slash retreat at the end of June on a Monday, and it was the end of a fiscal period where I didn't have time to take vacation time, and it was really strange that they scheduled it on a Monday, so I don't have any updates.
Can I ask, was it a whole-day thing?
It was.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, and I'm sure I would have liked to have gone. The agenda looked like it had substance to it, but we bantered around some Saturdays and some evenings and breaking it up into two shifts over, and they went with a Monday full day. I just couldn't do that.
It's a big commitment.
And I should have, in hindsight, I should have emailed you and let that be communicated to the rest of the committee, I guess, to see if anybody else could have gone, so I apologize. I will do that next time.
It's okay, I couldn't have gone, so.
Yeah. Probably would have been tough for everybody. Okay, Brian, do you want to fill us in on anything going on at the high school?
Well, right now, summer school is underway, and for fall athletics, there's a baseline concussion program going on by the both new and former athletic director, so that will help us study concussions and hopefully prevent them in the future, especially for fall sports.
Very good. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Luznia. So I wanted to just share with you first the letter that we got from the state about our district-determined measures, and the fact that we have, we were able to complete them with Shirley Gilfeather's help. In fact, the letter is, the email is addressed to Shirley, and it's, I just want to read a little statement here. "We commend the educators within your district who have shown tremendous leadership and organization in your effort to fulfill the expected implementation timeframe. ESC recognizes," that's the Elementary and Secondary Education Department, "recognizes that the work of identifying and developing DDMs, District-Determined Measures, for every educator is challenging, yet it is also extremely important. District-determined measures of student growth will provide critical feedback to educators to improve their practice." And it ends with, "Again, we thank you for your submission of your plan for implementing DDMs in 2014, 2015. We recognize the substantial amount of work that educators in your district have put into this process, and your efforts will serve as a model for districts across the Commonwealth. We look forward to supporting you in this important work. If you need additional guidance, please contact Ron Noble." And it was signed by Ron Noble. While I was at the superintendent's conference last week, we received a report on how many districts had fully implemented district-determined measures, and I think it was 42 across the state. So Shirley Gilfeather and her efforts certainly do need to be commended, as well as the work of our teachers and administrators in our district for fulfilling this requirement. So I just wanted to share that good news with you.
Excellent.
And next, I've asked Dr. Perron to come and share some more good news about our advanced placement results, and he's going to come to the podium, and maybe he has a couple of slides to share with us. And we're very pleased about this news as well.
It's here, certainly not there. Well, everybody has it in front of them. I don't. It's plugged in. I don't know if it's my, it's plugged in down here.
Is it on? Oh, yeah, I just want to listen. There's something's happening.
Yeah, that's, the PowerPoint is supposed to be. Is your PGA up?
Yeah? PGA's in? I don't know. I really don't need it. I mean, everyone has the PowerPoint, or the slides in front of them.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Perron, we'll make them available on our website as well for those who aren't able to see them this evening.
That's it, put A, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay. So when I was hired by then-curriculum director Follinsby five years ago, and Debbie Carter was superintendent, one of the things we talked about was looking at the high school and rigor at the high school, and increasing the rigor there. We started with changes to program studies and graduation requirements, and the year before I was there, again, under Ms. Follinsby as curriculum and grant coordinator, the MIMZI grant was signed between then-principal Jeff Seeland, and Massachusetts Math/Science Initiative, the grant was focused on math, science, of course, and then they added ELA as part of the grant. And at that time, the resources were put into the development and enhancement of our AP program. Since that time, five years now, have gone by, and we have five years of data, and the data, you see in front of you, there's a table that has all of our, on the left side, all of our, all of our AP classes, and then over time, it shows the number of students enrolled, and then the qualifying scores from 2008 to 2014, and then again, from 2008 to 2014. You'll notice this year's data, the last column on your right, qualifying scores, and I just wanted to bring two points to focus immediately, and that was the number of qualifying scores in our AP Calculus class. Of 20 students that took the AP test, 17 scored a 3 or better, and Ms. Taylor, our calculus teacher, has just done a phenomenal job with those students in preparing them for that extremely rigorous course. We've had that course for many years, but I think this is one of the greatest percentage of students who were enrolled that actually qualified with that 3, 4, or 5.
Dr. Perron, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you explain what the Calculus AB versus BC means?
Two levels of AP Calculus. We offer Calculus AB at our high school. Now, over the years I've been there, students have taken the AP exam in the Calculus BC, but it's really just a handful of students over the five years that I've been there that have really tried that. We only offer Calculus AB.
AB, and that's a full-year program, right?
That is a full-year program at the high school.
So BC would be like a Calculus II, like a-
Would be like a Calculus II. That is correct.
Thank you, I just always wanted to understand that.
And one of our newer classes is Statistics, and we had 11 students enrolled in the class this year, and of the 11, nine qualified. We've had Statistics for years, but not AP Statistics. This was the first year as part of the MIMZI grant that we ran the class, and we're going to continue to run it even though MIMZI has now closed up shop with us and moved on to other schools and different cohorts. If you, and, you know, we could go line by line through this, but I just wanted to kind of point out those two highlights, and then I wanted to look at the AP historical data, which are two separate charts. I guess they're on a back-to-back on another piece of paper.
Thanks. Dr. Perron, before you go on, could you talk a little bit about the significance of those qualifying scores?
Sure. The AP exam is a national test, and so students that take the test are basically challenging themselves against college classes and against their peers across the, across the United States. All the AP exams are given on the same day, at the same time, throughout the high schools. If a student scores a 3 or better, they qualify for college credit in the course. It's almost like a dual enrollment class, though it's taught at the high school level. Because of the rigor of the exam itself, they're able to get credit from it. Two years ago, a parent sat down with me and talked about the fact that son went to a college in Boston, and because of the AP classes taken at the high school, the first semester was off the table. She basically tested out of that first semester in class. So there's a real value to the AP courses. They're very challenging, they're very rigorous, and there's a cost associated with the test. And we expect that if you're in an AP class, you're going to take the test. It's your choice to be in it. We're going to offer the best preparation that we can, and then the balance is that if you do score 3, 4, or 5, then you stand a good chance of getting that credit at the college level.
Thank you.
So AP enrollment, you can see as the grant progressed from 2010 till 2014, our enrollment has gone up, you know, the year before, 2009, Mr. Seeland's last year, when he sat down with the MIMZI representatives and current superintendent, and planned the next five years with MIMZI, we had 12 students enrolled in AP classes. And as we move forward, you'll see we went from 65, 104, 126, 150, to 206 taking AP tests. So Little Vito could be in three classes taking, taking AP tests, so that's, so some of these students are duplicate students, just taking multiple tests. And the exciting part of the other side of it is the qualifying scores. Over that same period of time, you see growth in the qualifying scores, from low in 2009, six students that qualified, to in 2014, 97 students qualified. And it's really remarkable that our students are challenging themselves as they are. There's a recognition, I think, by everybody that when we kind of took the prerequisites and ripped them down and allowed anybody to challenge themselves, that we're doing a good thing for our students. And even though, again, Little Vito took the test, maybe he didn't get the 3, he was still in a rigorous class at the college level while he was in high school, preparing himself for that next step. So I might not have gotten the grade, but I certainly took the class at that high level of rigor, and I'm preparing myself for what lays ahead in college.
And didn't MIMZI have some data on how well students were prepared for college, those students that taken?
Some of the slides that, over time, we've shown, and I see some parents here that probably sat through some of those presentations at the high school, when we were trying to roll out the program in the spring before registration, we would talk about what it does for you as a parent, and what it does for the student, and what it does for the student in school if they've taken an AP class previously, if they've taken a class they're more prepared and more apt to persevere in those challenging courses at the next level. And then their GPAs, there's a correlation, of course, I'm not a statistician, I couldn't make that correlation for you now, but there's a correlation between the courses you're taking, the scores you're getting in high school, and then your GPA at the next level. And MIMZI did a great job of bringing that data to us and sharing that data with parents and with students, and supporting us, the teachers, the students, as they work through, as we work through our growth in this area.
So I think this is a wonderful indicator of the rigor that we now have in our high school, and how we're making that accessible to so many students, any students who really are interested in challenging themselves, have that opportunity, and that opportunity to become better prepared for college, so we're very proud of this.
We certainly are, and, you know, looking at the data, it's not all as great as those two that I showed. There are some classes, you know, we're having, we have, in English, we have three sections of AP classes in Lit and Language, and so most of our seniors and most of our juniors are challenging themselves to take that class. They're not all getting 4s and 5s, but they're all challenging themselves, and that's really, I think, important for them and for us at the high school. One of the things that we recognize at the district and the site level, once MIMZI went away, all those extrinsic benefits that were a part of MIMZI went away too. So we have to find a way to bring some of those things on as we move forward with this. One of the big things, I think, that was probably huge in determining the success we've had is the Saturday School Preparation Classes, where we would get together with cohorts from other schools, and our teachers and our students would be working with them on projects around the AP class that they were in. And one of the things that we've discussed is trying to find a way to sponsor those types of weekends, maybe talking to some of the businesses in town and seeing if they wouldn't want to put their name on, you know? Wouldn't it be great to have East Hampton Savings Bank name on a Saturday School for Calculus, or a Saturday School for Economics, or something like that, so that we can still get those extrinsic benefits that really help our students succeed, even though monetarily we can't support it from the district funds? So we're really trying to think outside the box on how we can bring those things forward too. The other piece of the conversation was the support that teachers received with the trainings and the summer sessions that they had, and then the collaborative opportunities they had with their peers around AP Calculus or Chem, et cetera. So we're really trying to think of ways to bring those things forward as we move the program forward.
We've reaped great benefits from the MIMZI grant. We've been able to train a number of teachers and increase the number of AP courses that we can offer, and so it's been a great experience.
It really has, and initially, the students and the teachers reaped a financial benefit from success. So if Little Vito took the test and got a qualifying score, he got money, and the teacher that had a certain amount of qualifying scores got money. And that, of course, as the grant, it was a diminishing grant, so as the grant, as we went on in years, we went down in money, those things started falling off the table, but our students have hung with it. They've really bought into what this is all about, and as have their parents, and I think we have to give kudos to our students, their parents, the community that supported, and our teachers who have done just a fantastic job rolling this out.
This is a great thing that we have for our high school, and, you know, thank you for trying to be creative, to figure out other ways to keep those Saturday sessions going and everything else, because it really, it's great for our students, and it's great to be able to say that East Hampton High School has so many advanced placement classes, as well as so many kids taking it. It's really great, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Very proud of it.
Also, kudos to the Guidance Department for making it clear to the students as they progress that it's real important to take these classes and take these opportunities to be very well-positioned for being competitive for college applications and admission.
That's a fantastic point, and the Guidance Councilors, you know, work hand-in-hand with me as we move through the registration process all the way to the master schedule building, but they're instrumental in bringing the message to students, and just letting them know what the opportunities are, what the benefits are, and then communicating those things to the parents.
Brian, what AP classes have you taken, and what's your experience with them?
Well, last year, no, well, two years ago now, I guess, sophomore year, I took AP United States History with Ms. Brown, and, I mean, that was just a phenomenal course, and there were, I think, two classes of it. It was, I mean, the school really does push kids to push themselves, and it's definitely present that, like, kids, there are definitely kids taking AP classes, and they're definitely reaping the benefits of it. This previous year, I took AP English, Language and Composition, and AP United States Government, and, I mean, both of those courses, just very vigorous. I mean, you can tell in the homework and the lessons, in everything. And kids are definitely praised for it. I mean, like, teachers are always, like, giving you the thumbs up and telling you, like, how good of a job you're doing, and come July, when you get your scores, you can definitely tell that all your hard work has paid off, so.
And Brian brings up the point too. MIMZI focused on math and science, and that was part of the national grant, included ELA, but one of the things that, again, kudos to the district and the school committee, they supported bringing US history and, US history, AP US history four years ago, or three years ago, onboard, and supporting it equally. So there's just been a balanced approach to what we're trying to do, and even though the grant left out Social Studies Department, you know, one of our stronger departments has really wanted to be a part of it. The students recognize that, you know, we won a state title in the, in two, it was two years ago, were you in there?
It was the year before. It was two years of my class, yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, it's an amazing, amazing opportunity for our students. We're going to continue to offer it. There's some discussion that maybe we have too many classes for the number of school we have, but we can always run them every other year if we had to. If we had Environmental Science one year, Biology the next, Chemistry one year, Physics the next. There's ways to do it that I think we can keep our equilibrium and not be too top-heavy. We want to serve all our students, but this is certainly, has shown what happens when you take resources and thoughtfully put those resources into the classroom.
It's really exciting. Do we have, our enrollment number's looking pretty solid for fall, for the 24th, 25th?
Yes. AP Bio didn't run. AP Environmental hasn't run for two years, but, you know, we're having new teachers. We have some turnover in the Science Department, we have new teachers, and I think Ms. Anderson's going to start turning things around there, because it's really like a grassroots effort to get kids excited, involved. We have a new physics teacher, and I'm hopeful that Mr. Phelps, in the next couple of years, we can get going, get him trained, and get physics going. But again, we have to have a balanced approach to it. We don't have unlimited resources, and our students, as fantastic as they are, can only stretch themselves so thin, and we want to make sure that we're doing what's, what's healthy for everybody, school included.
Would it be, this is, it could be a discussion for tabling later too, but just as a teaser that Nancy and Dr. Perron, I wonder if this is a conversation to have with the collaborative to talk about maybe regional efforts for the Saturday prep programs, that may be combining with other, with North Hampton, or if there's a neighboring district that we could share?
And North Hampton was ahead of us in the cohorts of MIMZI, and so we kind of were their sister school throughout this, and I know our teachers worked with their teachers as we, as we grew in the program. They're a block school, we're a block school, so there's a lot of similarities between, between the two. So I think that's a fantastic idea.
It would seem like it would be a natural fit for the, something for the collaborative to get behind and try to support.
We'll certainly pursue that with Mr. Deal. That's a great idea.
Certainly is.
And I just want to take this opportunity, Deb, because you mentioned guidance and their place in this, just to tell a little story. This weekend, I was having dinner with some friends, and one of the friends was a retired Guidance Counselor from another district, and he made mention to me, he said, "Just please make sure to share this back with your high school," of how impressed he was with Dr. Perron and our guidance staff, and how they support our students and really do all the right things. So, again, that's just another testimony coming from outside of the strength that we have at our high school and with our staff, and so I just wanted to share that as well. And thank you, Dr. Perron, for your work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last item on my report is about the Green Communities Grant, and Wendy, I think you are very aware of this as well, and might want to-
It's really good news, you should announce.
It is good news. Wendy is one of our school committee members, was instrumental in this, in- Wendy is one of our school committee members, was instrumental in this, in a partnership with this.
In all fairness, I really just attended a couple of meetings.
Well, but you lent your support.
Mayor Goldstein and yourself and Shirley Goffeather did a tremendous amount of work.
But you lent your support, and that was important. So the good news is that we did receive a grant, a Green Schools Community Grant. And Mayor Kager and I went to Ashland, Massachusetts, not last week, the week before. They were having a sort of a congratulatory meeting for all the districts who had won some funds for the Green Communities Act. And there were a number of them there, but they, not all applications were funded, clearly. So at that point, we thought we were going to be told the amount of funding that we would get, but they said, "No, when you get home, there'll be a letter." So sure enough, there was. And it was very exciting to find out that we had received $147,653 of grant funds for our Green Communities projects. And you have here the letter from the state, and you can see all of the different projects that are being funded. These are energy-saving projects in our schools. Our schools, particularly Whitebrook, as we all know, have a huge drain on resources, being an old building. So a number of projects that were submitted are being funded. And Mayor Goldstein sent us an email saying that with utility incentives, this should provide $222,623 in building upgrades to the school buildings with only a $6,200 cost to the city. So that's pretty wonderful. And we will reap ongoing savings in energy costs over the years with these, with implementing these different projects. So good news for the district and the city.
Great.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay. Are you not going to explain to us what each of these things are? It's a building envelope or something.
If you'd like a future meeting on that, I will invite Mayor Goldstein and Pete Roy, my maintenance director.
Mayor would be happy to come and speak to, in kind of layperson terms, about what it means. But it is really exciting. And I just want to dovetail again on, I think, you know, we're waiting till fall and hear how our, I'm not going to remember the name of the Massachusetts school building application that we put in, but I think this kind of goes hand-in-hand with that further discussions around our building use and how we use our facilities in kind of short-term and long-term planning, and really hope that we can continue to have that conversation more actively in the fall. But this is, it's so exciting, so exciting.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to minutes. Minutes to approve from the last meeting?
Yes, I'm going to pretend to be Laura tonight. So, and Sue, am I making a motion or am I asking for a motion? I'm making a motion. Okay. So I'm, and is that the language I use? Move to approve. Thanks. There's, it actually says motion. So I move to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2014, school committee meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was almost too easy.
Motion passes.
I'll sign this afterward.
And you have warrants of approval?
Yes. I move to approve the school payroll dated July 24th, 2014, in the amount of $288,625.12.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to pass those. You guys mind sticking around since you're at that end of the table after the meeting is signed?
We won't run away. I promise.
I move to approve the school payroll dated on June 26th, 2014, in the amount of $1,061,044.12.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I'm finding pinks. Are there no pinks for the, to the treasure payroll authorization?
Correct. Just read from the, yeah. Just one pink.
That was at the, oh, there's a sneaky one in here. I move to approve the school payroll dated July 10th, 2014, in the amount of $350,667.56.
All those in favor?
Aye. And that, I believe, is it.
And there's no accounts payable's on there? I'm thinking that there's something at the bottom.
I'm so sorry. You're right. I knew you should have done this.
No. I just remember signing. I usually have to sign for like two things.
Sue, did I totally mess you up by not doing those in order? Okay. So I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated July 10th, 2014, in the amount of $492,765.09.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me just make sure I didn't miss the others. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 26th, 2014, in the amount of $478,954.16.
All those in...
Second.
All those in favor?
I'll try. My decimal point, God. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 26th, 2014, in the amount of $478,954.16.
$400,099.
Wendy, we're only thankful that we're not reading it. We're not laughing at you.
I'm going to do that one more time just for formality. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 26th, 2014, in the amount of $478,954.16. Math was not my forte. And that's it.
Very good. Okay, we have a school choice request for grade five, Whitebrook Middle School. I move to approve the request for an opening in fifth grade at Whitebrook for the 2014-2015 school year. Should we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we have a school choice vote to make on closing three slots at the kindergarten level. Superintendent Fowlesby, do you want to explain that to us?
I would like to, yes. Originally, we opened 10 slots and then another three slots in kindergarten. We filled all 10 slots. And in the meantime, we had some unexpected enrollments in kindergarten from our own community. So we want to keep the class sizes at an appropriate level. So I'm requesting that we close those additional three slots at this point in time, because we may get additional students from our community between now and the start of school.
That's outstanding. That's really good news.
Okay, do we have a motion? So I make a motion that we close those three kindergarten spots for the upcoming school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, lastly, we have a technology surplus request. Has everyone read that? Yes. So I make a motion that the following items be declared as surplus equipment. We have 75 laptops, one analog copier, 20 laser printers, 25 Cisco wireless access points.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Can I just, I noticed that Mr. Luce will be counting down his days, so we'll be losing an administrator at Maple.
Yes.
So, I mean, it'll be good. He'll have a couple of months so the kids can say goodbye.
That's right. That's right. He has certainly had a wonderful career here in East Hampton.
How long has he been here?
At Maple School. Goodness.
Do you know? Sorry. He's been here for a while, right?
It's been, yes, it's been a good long time. I was a teacher at Parsons School when he first became principal at Maple, so that was a number of years ago. And we certainly will miss him, but we're pleased that Judy Avril, one of the teachers over there who's been filling in for him whenever he was away, has agreed to take on the acting principal job while he's still here, and then interim until we hire someone. So we're sad to see Mr. Luce leave, but we know that the school will be in good hands with Ms. Avril as he takes his departure. Thank you for mentioning that.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Actually, I, yeah, I think we have to have someone else second it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you very much.